I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first order of business is the minutes from the April first, twenty twenty five regular council meeting. Anybody have any corrections or changes? If not, we would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Robin, and I think Rick got the second in there.
That's good.
All right, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you want to oppose, say no. All right, those minutes are approved. Then we have the minutes from the April tenth, twenty twenty five local board of appeal and equalization. I wasn't there, so I will abstain from those. I'll make a motion to approve those.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Rick, second by Mike. Any discussion on those minutes? If not, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose, state no. Those minutes are carried. Any changes to the agenda? If not, we would look for a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
I'll make a motion. We approve the set agenda.
Second.
Motion by Becky, second by Robin to approve the agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, state no. The agenda is approved. Guests in open forum, is there anybody here to address the council tonight? Fantastic. We'll move on to committee reports. Personnel committee. I will take that one. So we met the Friday after our last council meeting, so I guess that would have been the fourth. Uh, we reviewed the police chief interview process, um, looked at, um, the questions, how that's going to be working. Those interviews are coming up this Friday. Uh, then we've looked and discussed a little bit about summer hours, which will start after Memorial Day. Before, week before, perfect. And then we also discussed the response time requirement, which we will discuss more here coming up in agenda number eight, letter A. Anybody have any questions about personnel meeting? All right, we'll move on to public works committee then.
Public Works, we met on the ninth. Items, uh, eight, B, C, D are what we discussed, and, uh, we'll have an update on the wastewater facility efficiency audit, which, uh, Chris will touch on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so we did some, um, overtime through COVID and some of those, uh, things we saw utility bills kind of creeping up at the wastewater facility, so we, um, I happened to run into Mintap at the Rural Water Conference in twenty twenty four. Uh, they were looking for a site that could host. They kind of do a brief energy efficiency audit for small wastewater systems, and they didn't have anybody that would host one. And I said, well, we could probably do that here in Becker. So, um, our community and a couple other ones came, and we kind of went through a process of looking at things. They kind of focused more on smaller process kind of things. Um, one of the presenters that we had during that week was Paul Hessian from Minnesota Rural Water, who is their, uh, energy efficiency guru. Uh, so he goes around and does audits at different wastewater facilities for Minnesota Rural Water. So in that process, we said, well, uh, we could come and do one in Becker. That'd be great. It's free because we're a member of Rural Water. And then in that process, uh, Phil and I had, uh, Phil started the process with Excel, looking at, you know, is there something Excel can do to help us as we see the utility bills kind of creep up? So we worked with Cascade Energy through Excel to also do an audit. So in the packet, we included the two reports, one from Rural Water and one from, uh, Cascade, who was through Excel. Um, we worked with both entities. In the end, we kind of got the two sides together, and they each made a report, but they kind of worked off of each other, uh, identifying some things that we could potentially do to, uh, save some of our utility costs. Um, I'll get kind of back to the big one at the end, but a couple of things we did, we were able to work with Paul and look at some of our lift stations that have VFDs. We did some, uh, efficiency work, so we tried running them at different, uh, percents, uh, to try to get them at the most efficient point. So we did do some adjustments at lift station twenty. Uh, lift station eighteen was running as efficiently and the influence list station at the wastewater facility. So, um, in the report, they talk about some small savings that they estimate about, eh, seven hundred dollars annually for those adjustments. Uh, we did look at, um, blowers use a lot of energy, so we did some adjustments to both our domestic and our, uh, industrial blowers. Uh, so we basically increased the off time of the blowers, so they run in cycles, so it's on for a while and then off for a while. Um, that was an estimated savings of about twenty seven hundred dollars annually. Um, they identified the lighting. We had fluorescent lighting in the two admin buildings, uh, so we could do an upgrade to LED lighting, uh, which, small savings annually, uh, two hundred dollars, but we also had a rebate potential to come back from Excel. And then we're also doing the HVAC upgrade on the storage building, so we went from a giant mammoth unit down to a much smaller HVAC unit because of the change of use of the space. So that one, they estimated, uh, would be quite a savings, twenty one hundred dollars or twenty one thousand dollars roughly a year, uh, just because of the way we would change how that space is used. Uh, the last thing that was kind of identified through this process is, um, the power factors on both sides, the domestic and the industrial. Uh, you want your power factor to be point nine or greater. If it's less than that, then Excel looks at that as an issue that they have to deal with, and you can see a lot of demand charges. Uh, so our power factor on the industrial side was, was a point four six, which, you know, kudos to Becker. That was the worst they'd ever seen, so that we were impressed by that. Um, domestic side was much better. That was, I think, in the point, point six, point seven area. Um, so come to, come to work through all these things, uh, we identified a way to address that power factor issue. We did do that already on the industrial side, so we installed a capacitor. Um, and we have seen through the controls upgrade on that generator that our power factor is staying above point nine. Um, so they estimate that power factor correction could save the city approximately thirty three thousand dollars a year by doing that. And that is because with that power factor being below, they essentially charge additional demand charges, and then they talk about a ratcheting charge. So once you get one demand charge on there, then it ratchets for six months, and you gotta be under for six more months before it falls off. So, uh, so it was a good, a good exercise. Uh, it was nice to work with all three groups, and we did identify some things that we could do to save some, uh, utility costs for the city. And, uh, so we'll, we'll see how the industrial side power factor, if it pans out the way it's supposed to, then we would do the same on the domestic side. So that's a real quick summary of the things we found, so.
Great. Thank you, Chris.
It was more than I cared to go into.
Yeah. I don't blame you there at all. Any questions for public works committee? Move on to EDA then?
EDA met last night. Um, we had some discussion about the, uh, twenty five point one acre property in the business park that we had received a term sheet on, and we had some discussion. There'll be more coming on that. Uh, monthly market update, sixteen homes on the market right now. Uh, that's less than one month inventory, so that inventory is still staying very low. And, uh, the apartment building at Fairview Ridge is moving, the second building is moving right along. That was about it.
All right, any questions for EDA? Not, we'll move on to the PD City Hall project update. Mr. LaRue.
Um, a lot of the faces are really in process now. Bathroom partitions are in, cabinets, case work is being installed. Entry tile is in, the ceiling and the entrance is in. Uh, roof caps on most of the roof parapet walls, um, are done. Uh, furniture is delivered on May sixth and seventh, and maybe even for the next meeting, you'll be able to use the front door.
Ooh.
So.
That'd be nice.
Big deal.
So we're getting there.
All right. Any other committees that we missed? All right, then we will move on to number eight, board committee and consultant reports. Response time requirement, Mr. LaRue.
I'm here, Cobanger, and city council members, uh, staff was reviewing, um, the city, any city policy regarding response time in relation to emergency and public works, uh, positions, um, as we're going through the process here for, for hiring a police chief. And, um, the only, uh, requirement we have right now is for water waste operator, water wastewater operators, uh, and they have to have a response time of forty five minutes. And given that, um, the staff, uh, the city is relatively small and the structure is very flat, um, we also believe that there should be at least three other, three other, um, positions that would have response times, um, attached to their positions because they would be critical, um, to be here in time of emergency. Those positions are the city administrator, police chief, and police lieutenant. Um, I think the council in the past has talked about, um, wanting, uh, some leadership to live as close as possible. We cannot have a residency requirement, but emergency response, uh, requirement is certainly appropriate. Uh, we visited about this at the last personnel committee meeting, and, um, it was recommended that this matter be brought to the city council for discussion and consideration.
Question I have for you is, those are the only three that you feel are necessary?
At this time, yes, because the water waste oper, uh, water, uh, wastewater operator is the one where we would have callouts on emergency. But police and, um, myself would also be, uh, necessary. If, if fire department was, of course.
It's a different.
There are, that's different, correct. And, you know, you have some departments, um, like we heard from Elk River. The chief does not have a response requirement, but there is secondary supervisory staff that does. So they do require kind of that mid-level management to be, um, certainly an on-call type thing, or probably rotates through staff. So at this time, yes, those would be the only three to add.
And in the future, are you considering others?
Uh, perhaps. Nothing is evident right now, though.
What do we, what do we consider when we say on-call? Does that mean you respond to a text within thirty minutes? Does that mean you are on the scene in thirty minutes?
You're on the scene, you're in the city limits within thirty minutes.
Okay. How does that work, um, for like you, there's only one city administrator, so how does that work when you go on vacation?
Well, that's, it's, it is, you can't mandate every circumstance, so what you do is you shall reside within thirty minutes. So the chances are that you will be home. Um, obviously, you could be out of trip or, you know, just out of town for the weekend, too. But it is, um, it is commonplace to have a response required.
Yeah, but they also, like, if he's on vacation, he has somebody else that is to step in and take charge, yes?
It would be managed, certainly a situation would be managed, yes.
That's gonna be now, but.
Right.
So, I mean, you still got somebody to cover.
Yes.
Because you gotta let him take vacation.
Right, yeah.
Within thirty minutes, yeah. That really opens it up.
Their water is really nice.
St. Cloud, North Metro.
Always beautiful.
Merman, yeah. We're putting a tracker on him, too, just in case anybody's wondering. I think this is kind of, I, I think it's an important thing. We talked about it personnel. Um, but obviously with a smaller organization such as us, we're not going to have, you know, the number of people that you might see in a bigger area, but I definitely support this. What is this, uh, and I apologize because I didn't, uh, I thought of this before and I didn't ask it. Um, what does this mean for our current hiring process? Or we would have several individuals in that process that would probably not meet this requirement. I, I did see, we did say within a year, but is that something we maybe want to communicate?
I, I think some of them are aware of it. Um, if adopted tonight, it would be in place prior to time of offer, so it would be an effective policy. In thirty minutes, it is arbitrary. The council can determine something, uh, shorter or farther if they want.
Well, thirty minutes takes you about to St. Cloud.
Yep.
And if you don't want to live in St. Cloud, you know.
You know, it'd be other, other side of Elk River.
Um, you're pushing it to get here in thirty minutes.
Maybe, now that might be pushing it, too.
Is there a problem with going to like forty five?
No, there's no problem.
With council, is there a problem going to forty five minutes?
I don't know.
Because they still wouldn't be in the metro proper. They would be a.
On this side.
On the other side of Elk River, uh, Sartell, you know, like.
Yeah, my daughter lives in Maple Grove, and it, it does not take me forty five minutes to get there, so.
Well, what we do in a car, I don't think is a factor. You know what I'm saying? It's, uh, there's got to be some means of measuring this, and I don't think our personal driving habits are sufficient.
I follow all rules. Honestly, I think the easiest way to do this.
We better send our chief out.
I think the, the only honest way to do this is to Google map it from their residence to City Hall because.
There you go. That's the way to do it, yeah.
You know? Because that assumes a speed limit.
That assumes.
Normal routes, exactly.
And if you can beat it, even better.
I'd be okay, uh, going to forty five minutes. I think that would be a little, uh, especially if we're talking to response time. I mean, it's not thirty minutes drive, it's thirty minutes response time. So that means you're at home eating a bowl of ice cream all of a sudden, whoa, gotta go, you know, there's five or ten minutes to, you know.
Finish the ice cream.
Well, that too, yeah. But to be clear, Greg.
Forty five seems like a long time, but I think it is a, a, a better number.
But we are talking at a hypothetical forty five minutes at that point.
Yes.
I mean, you could be at your child's sporting event somewhere, and you could be an hour away.
Yeah, for sure. Oh, yeah. It, it may not work in every circumstance, but.
Uh, this dealing with residents, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah.
Pardon me?
This would be dealing with residents, not.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
For, for emergency response.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be okay pushing to forty five if everybody else is, uh.
Yeah, I'm fine.
I'm fine with that.
For the, for all of them. So is that a motion, Mike, to amend that resolution to forty five minutes?
Yes, I make that a motion.
Okay, I'll second that. So we have a motion by Mike, seconded by Rick to adopt resolution twenty five twenty eight with the three first listed positions changing to forty five minutes across the board. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
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 Anyone oppose, state no. Resolution twenty five twenty eight carries. Up to letter B, lift station seventeen pump and control panel replacement. Mr. Listen.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight I have for you an RCA and resolution twenty five twenty nine for the replacement of the pumps and the control panel at lift station seventeen. So if you're not aware where lift station seventeen is, I got that little picture in the RCA there at the end of one hundred and thirty second street, just off the cul-de-sac, kind of past country lumber and, and potter trucking out in the industrial park. Um, the station was installed in two thousand and eleven. We got power to the station in twenty three in preparation for country building out there. Uh, the pumps are original. The panel was refurbished from the wastewater facility from a different lift station. Uh, the mice have had a heyday out there, so we had to replace some wiring and some components prior to, uh, this, just to get it back up and running. Uh, so we did put this in the schedule, knowing it was coming back online to replace both those items, and that station will be set for probably, I, I'm estimating twenty years right now. I'm putting that on the pumps even because we don't get a lot of runtime with one user right now, so, um. I've got the quotes that we got for the pumps, uh, total control for the panel and the installation of the panel and the control work. Hubbard Electric for the actual physical install of that and connection of the power, so I included those in the packet. We did discuss this with the public works committee, and the committee was fine bringing it to council for consideration. And we did budget in our CIP for twenty twenty five, seventy eight thousand dollars for the pump and control panel replacements. And tonight I'd be looking for a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty five twenty nine, approving the pump and control panel replacement for lift station number seventeen as presented for a price not to exceed seventy four, seven, seventy, twenty three, which is the proposal cost plus ten percent, just in case we find anything unexpected out there. And we, with this, we would be replacing, we have flight pumps there, we would replace them with new flight pumps, so we'd be recommending the EP quote.
Okay, any questions for Chris? I do have one, Chris. Do we have any other installed similar apparatus that aren't being operated right now?
Nope, not anymore. Well, technically, lift station nineteen is not being operated yet. It was built as part of developing out the industrial park. So seventeen had been the kind of one outlier that we didn't have power and nobody was using it yet, so, um.
So is there any wisdom to pulling that stuff or until we need it, or would the same thing happen to that one?
In nineteen, well, it's kind of, kind of depend upon what happens out in the industrial park and with some of those properties. If, if they develop, we'll be using that station pretty heavily right away. If they don't, then at some point, we pull the pumps out, put them on the shelf at the.
Okay.
Lift, the, the panel itself, it's a little more difficult because now we're getting into electrical and pulling things out. But we would take the pumps out and then keep them at the plant, and then staff would spin the impellers monthly, quarterly. I'd suggest monthly. I might get quarterly, kind of depends. So make sure they don't rust up and get bound up.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions for Chris on the lift station pump and control panel? If not, we would entertain a motion for resolution twenty five twenty nine. Make a motion to, uh, adopt resolution twenty nine, twenty five twenty nine, approving the pump and control panel replacement for lift station number seventeen for price not to exceed seventy four, seven, seventy, twenty three. Okay, we have a motion by Rick and a second by Robin. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, state no. That resolution passes.
Thank you.
On to the, thank you. We'll move on to the domestic aqua aerobic filter media replacement.
All right, tonight, another RCA and resolution twenty five thirty for the replacement of the filter media and the filter grids in the aqua aerobic filters. Um, so if you look down in the picture, including the RCA, a little overhead of the wastewater facility, the aqua aerobic filters are at the tail end of our domestic treatment train. Uh, they'd be considered a tertiary treatment process, so kind of a polishing process. So, uh, we do our treatment in our ditches. They settle in the clarifier. That clear liquid comes off the top. It passes through these filters. Uh, that cloth media is small enough where it'll grab some of the TSS, maybe some floatables and things to try to help clear up that effluent before it mixes in the combined and is discharged out. Um, the TSS is important because we do have a limit on phosphorus and TSS. And we, when we had these down, when I first started twenty sixteen, we replaced the media then. And when we had them down, we did notice a slight increase in the TSS and the phosphorus that went out. So, uh, they do help to, help us maintain a lower, uh, concentration on our effluent, which is nice because then you have a little more wiggle room, uh, as, as far as what goes out for your MPDS permit. Um, what we're suggesting this time, because the last time we did it, some of the grids were starting to get brittle and breaking. So instead of just replacing the cloth, this time we do the cloth with the grid inside. So you basically have a, a tube that the water comes in, and then it flows up and through these, these little pie-shaped media. Um, you got threaded rod, and then they're bolted in, so you gotta, you gotta jump in there, and you gotta stand there, and you gotta take the bolts off, and then pull them off the thread rod. And then with this one, we would just replace the whole piece, so a whole new media with a grid would go on, bolt them back down and put it into operation. And then the next time we have to do this, we just do the cloth media. So kind of every other time, or look at it and see and, and kind of spread that cost a little bit, so. Um, and we don't have another quote because it is their proprietary, uh, item, so we can't get another quote for their media. So just have the one for you tonight. We did discuss this with public works. Public works committee was okay with us bringing it to the council for consideration. And we did budget for this. Now, the, we did budget fifty three thousand was the original number we had. Uh, they have increased slightly since we got that original quote. Um, so if I look at my second page, what I'd be looking for tonight is the, the actual quote was, uh, let me get the number here for you.
Sixty six.
Seventy eight.
Yep, sixty thousand eight eighty eight. So that was for the grids plus, uh, the seals and, uh, the filter media. So with that, what I'd look for tonight is a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty five thirty approving the replacement of that filter media and the frames for a price not to exceed sixty six, nine, seventy eight. So that's the proposed cost plus ten percent. Um, and the savings that we had on the lift station seventeen replacement would cover the difference that we have here, so, um, so we're still breaking even between the two projects, so. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
All right, any questions for Chris? Those are long. I've been here. I remember doing these last time in twenty sixteen. I actually went over there and took a tour of that, so when you're talking about those widges, I remember that.
Yeah, it's painful. It's just hard to work in the, but, you know, it, it, it works. It's part of the process, so you gotta do it, but, you know.
All right, if there's no further questions, we'd entertain a motion for resolution twenty five thirty.
I'll make a motion. We approve resolution twenty five thirty, domestic, uh, filter replacement.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Mike, a second by Becky. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, state no. That motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Knutson's up with the wastewater handling agreement with Excel Energy.
I thought I made that title long enough, so I had time to walk from my corner. Um, yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as the mayor had stated, uh, we're looking to, uh, sign an agreement with, uh, Sherco for their ash, are their, yeah, ash, ash leachate, um, discharge. So in twenty twenty three, we started a trial period with Excel. Um, I was surprised when I looked back and realized it's taken us a couple of years to get to this point. But, uh, we did a sixty day trial with them to see how it would react at our plant. So they need to discharge that water. It's, it's relatively clean, but not clean enough to put it into the river or put it back into the ground, so they've got to get rid of it someplace. One of the hangups with us is, is the price tag on the charge per thousand. We were, uh, at sixty dollars per, per thousand for the trial, uh, which was considerably higher than they're paying at, at St. Cloud. They truck some to St. Cloud right now, and St. Cloud is kind of an outlier. They're charging like twenty one, I think it's twenty one, one, twenty one dollars, uh, a thousand. Um, we looked at some of the other areas, and, uh, we, we felt sixty was reasonable, but it's higher than we're charging, uh, GRE or Bonco for their leachate. So after we, a little bit back and forth, we were able to narrow it down, and we, we landed at forty five uh, dollars per thousand is what's, uh, the agreement is, is, uh, looking at. Also, the term of the agreement, they wanted twenty years for the agreement, and we weren't willing to do that. Uh, we'd need an out, which we do have a performance out in the contract, but we needed an out just in case our permit changes. So what we propose is this would run in concurrency with, with our permit. Every five years when it renews, uh, we would look at this contract and, and see if there's any changes to our permit restrictions. We would incorporate them into this leachate, but, um, it's also a nice revenue stream for us to take it at the plant. So that's why we're, we're recommending approval on this. So the agreement would call for, uh, trucks to be delivered five days a week, uh, Monday through Friday, uh, between basically our normal business hours, up to ten truckloads a, a day that they can handle. Our plant could handle that. We didn't have any disturbances, uh, and we're, we're feeling comfortable with that. Chris and I did have a, uh, a meeting this morning with the folks from, uh, Excel to walk through some of the parameters, the testing, the understanding of what's going on. Uh, should this approved tonight, uh, they would look to start trucking, uh, in all likelihood, next Monday and run it through their plant close-up or their, their, uh, their pond close-up, which is roughly, uh, the end of October, depending on weather. For freeze-up, they pull their pumps out and stop the process. This agreement does also call for, if they want to put infrastructure in the ground and, and do hard pipe right to a lift station, uh, with our approval, uh, they would have to, uh, meter it so we can control the volume flow, and we would control the gate on it, so if we need to shut it down, we can shut it down. So, uh, this has been through legal a couple of times. Uh, they've, they've looked through that. Uh, they support the agreement as written because we do have outs and we do have emergency shutdown should we need it. So staff is bringing this to you tonight, looking for approval to move on the agreement with Excel and get the process started. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Questions?
Go ahead. You got some.
Yeah.
I got a question. Um, so should the, I noticed, because we did actually have some of the language about the, well, if they put pipes in the ground, actually, that's covered our ear. We wouldn't have to come back again, probably. Um, should they do that, uh, how do we test that? Because right now, we can just test it, you know, as they deliver, but if we have to, if we start having issues and we're thinking we have to maybe test a little more, I guess, how do we test that if it's coming straight to a lift station?
They would still have to either do a grab sample at that point or a grab sample in the structure itself and give us, the parameters for testing wouldn't change. Just how they're grabbing that sample would change when it comes into the lift station, you know, that they're using right now. They grab it at the discharge point and test it before it would then forced down to our, our plant. We'd be able to do that, and we would control the valve on that, so they would shut that down. And if they choose, choose to hard pipe it, any of that infrastructure cost is all on them. And the agreement says that regardless of cost or investment, we can shut it down at any time for cause. So that's why they're a little hesitant to do that. I don't know if we're going to get to that point. Not likely this year, for sure, but, uh, if that goes into play, because they had quoted about a million dollars, maybe a little bit more than that. So they just got to value where, where their trucking fees are at, because they're still going to truck to St. Cloud as well. They're going to run two trucks to St. Cloud, one truck to Becker. Uh, they're running about, was it nineteen or twenty trucks a day is their plan, I believe?
Three trucks, and they can do.
I think it was nine.
Three rounds for St. Cloud.
For St. Cloud, yeah. Ten, ten to us. So looking at that, I, it, it surprises me. Their transportation cost makes it feasible to, to go to St. Cloud, but I'm not running their business operation. We're just trying to help them in Becker. And we've been told that at their, that facility, not just the ash portion of it, but just water in general, they've got a billion gallons of water they need to try and discharge somehow. So they're looking for multiple outlet streams, so we would love to be able to get the trucks off the street and hard pipe it, but it comes down to finances for them and capital improvement, so I'm not sure if they're going to go there. Uh, and if they do, it's not likely this year.
Yeah, I think when they described it at Excel, at the meeting, the one time they, we could fill Pebble Creek Golf Course like ten feet tall or something like that with what was how much when they were trying to describe how much water it was.
It's, it's crazy. You can't, can't even fathom what the, the water discharge is. And again, it's, it's relatively clean, but it's still dirty enough that you can't discharge it to a natural body of water. So, so that's why we, we felt it wasn't, and it's important to have a separate revenue stream in an agreement, so we can isolate that and we can know exactly where that's at. So if there's any violations, they have the opportunity to correct them. They don't correct them, we shut them off. So.
Mike, you have a question?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of doing this, but I am curious, why is St. Cloud so much cheaper than what we are?
Again, this is just speculation on our part. St. Cloud has such a diverse collection of, of water and discharge points. I think that using a little clean water can help dissolve some of the stuff. They're taking some toxic stuff up there from some of the breweries and, and food supply and stuff like that. So it could help them in their overall operation. That's just speculation. Chris and I have been up there several times and, and worked with their staff and, and have a good relationship with them. So I think bringing in cleaner water, where we, we're limited to what we can do. We don't want to disturb our bugs and bring too much clean water in. I think it actually helps them to maybe dilute some of that water up there. And that's why they can do it in, in a more economical fashion that way.
Makes sense.
Phil, where does this, does this water come from? Just the ash pile?
Yep. So it's.
This is going to be their, this could be.
Even when it's capped. So right now, they've got a good portion of it that's open. But they'll have to monitor this forever. So once you start sealing those, those crowns off, you still cover it and you topsoil it and grow on it. So it reduces the amount that that comes through. But they've got open cuts out there and it'll all get pumped to this pond. The good thing is, is, is their pond can hold a, a, a good amount of water. Even the runoff or the rain, you know, contributes to that. So it continues to, to add to that collection. But the nice thing is, is they've got a decent amount of sidewall out there. So if we have to shut it down for any length of time or suspend it, it doesn't flood them or it doesn't hurt them greatly unless we totally shut it down. And it would have to be shut down for a whole season. But if we continue to just pick this thing away and constantly do it, even if they hardpipe it, it's likely we would go to seven-day-a-week operation because our system wouldn't, wouldn't have adverse reaction to it. And we could do it potentially year-round for them as well.
They could even get more trucks too, if they absolutely, I mean, if it, more stationary, we couldn't take it.
Yep.
Get a couple more trucks and keep running.
And we could consider it, you know, once we get a little bit more time under our belt, we could even offer them that we could, we sign an agreement to give them access to our, our facility in the dump locations. We got cameras out there. We got security out there and we could absorb that. But we just want to get a good run. We, like I said, we had sixty days where it worked well. Last fall, we did it for about thirty days, I think, we, we ran them, for about thirty days in October to help them out. So we get a full summer under our belt if they have consistent running. We're, we're more than accommodating them. So that's, that's our goal, is to try and be a good partner for them. And it will help us to, to bring in some revenue, to help us for future improvements and, and capital projects at the, at the plant as well.
Sure. And then after five, the, the fee can be renegotiated.
It will.
Because of inflation or whatever.
Yeah, renegotiate it. Yeah, there's no, in the, the Vonco or the GRE or both of them, we've got an escalation clause in those. A GRE. So we, we would get it in line with that. So they, they won't see a, you know, like an annual dollar bump. But at a renewal, they'll see a five-dollar bump more than likely.
Got it. Okay. Any other questions for Phil on the wastewater handling agreement? Not, we would look for approval of Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-one.
I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution twenty-five thirty-one wastewater handling agreement with Excel Energy.
One second. A motion by Mike, a second by Rick. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, state no. That carries.
One more thing on that. I would anticipate finance will work in conjunction with Budget and Finance Committee as far as the revenue and where that's going to be placed or how that's going to be allocated. So our jobs are just to keep it running and then they will put the numbers on paper and, and work with you guys on how that's going to be set up and stuff like that.
Sounds good. Awesome. You're up again, it looks like, for Street Improvement Project bid award, which includes Central Avenue. For anybody that wants to email me again, you can, but we're fixing it soon. It's going to happen.
And, and to that, that point, Mr. Mayor, we want to let residents know that yes, we did take that street back and yes, we did get funding from the county to improve that. We didn't take back a clunker road that we have to pay to improve. So it's good all the way around because we're going to help T-Town Parking over there and clean up that street. So, but with that, yes, we did have bid opening on, on April eighth for our twenty twenty-five street improvements. We had, on the project, we had a base bid plus an alternate bid. That was some, some storm improvements out at Water Tower Three and into the park. But we had five, five bidders on the, on the project ranging, so these, these bid ranges are the base plus the alternate. Low bid was one million eight forty-six, nine nine six ninety-one. And the high bid was two million four seventeen, eight oh one sixty. Our engineers' estimate on the project was two million three hundred thousand, six thirty-four, fifty-five. OMG Midwest, DVA Minnesota Paving and Materials was the low bidder. This is the third year that they've been a little bitter for us. So they've done good work in the past. So we are happy to have them here. They're qualified. You'll see the certification letter from, from our engineers on this. And staff is looking to get movement on the base and the alternate bid as well. That's our recommendation. Randy Sabart and Bryce Johnson with SEH are in the audience today. If you have any questions for them. Otherwise, we're looking to move forward so we can get word to our contractor and set up a pre-con and get it scheduled. Also for residents to, to remember, we know that Freedom Days is very active around T-Town and there's a, Central will see some major disturbances this year. We will not allow that work to begin. We may see some saw cutting. We may see some inlet protections, stuff like that. We won't see any pavement disturbances. Well, it's already disturbed, but.
I was worried about that.
But we won't be tearing any curb out. We won't do any, you know, any of the dirt work until after Freedom Days, so we can carry on that festival. So that's duly noted. And, and Casey would be the project manager again with, with OMG. And so he, he knows the drill. And Jerry Siegfried with SEH is our watchdog and he does a really good job of communicating with our residents and our contractors what to expect and what to, what to deal with.
So I've had a few people call about like grad parties and stuff.
Yep.
Would, will we have a schedule once that meeting happens, like a, an estimate?
Yep. So what we'll do, we do a Q and A. What we'll do is I'll work with Shannon. We come through and we just highlight the areas. So any address that's living on there, we'll, we'll send a mailer out to them, what to expect, what's going to happen, what we're going to see. The big thing that all residents need to know, we keep access open to your, your house all the time. We, we won't block you from that. There may be, if we're pouring a new apron because it's bad or some curb or whatever, we, we may stall you out and have to, you know, reroute you for a, a few minutes. But for the most part, you'll have access. And on the weekends, we typically don't do any work unless they get behind schedule. But if you hear any of those things, feel free to turn them back to me. I like to go out door-knock and, and talk to people, walk them through the project. But we'll send a, a Q and A out to, to everybody. So they'll see that. And then we'll give them a project update as well. But, you know, maybe six weeks into the project, just to where things are at.
Do you want to maybe read the list of streets here?
Oh, sure.
That we're talking about doing this year, just.
Yep. Yeah. So the reads, the streets impacted right now or being proposed are Riley Avenue, Hillside Lane Southeast, Meadow Circle, Pineview Drive from Rolling Ridge Road to Riley Avenue, Sandy Lane, Woodland Court, Central Avenue from Hancock to Sherburne Avenue, one hundred and thirty-second Street, which is in the industrial park. We're cleaning up the driveway and, and lot at Riley Wellhouse and Carly Johnson. And then the, are the, the reconstruction of both parking lots here and the, the wear course on the north side of the building over here. And then the, the drainage upgrade or the, the storm upgrade is, shouldn't be impactful. You just have to watch your step at City Park. But it's back in the woods there by Autumn Ridge, the park, the water tower and the drainage there. We just got to clean that up.
Great. Did we have anything for the apartments over there? Was that going to, was that going to be a separate?
We were going to put this as part of that, but as part of the agreement, I think they are going to do that work.
Yep. We met with the, the owner of the, the development and their bonding company and they assured us that they would be doing the work this summer. So.
Okay. So they don't want to do it as part of our bid even and just kick us a check? They want to completely bid it out on their own, bring their own crews in?
Yep. That's what they said. They will take care of it.
Okay. Now, assuming because that's going to be a street turned over to us, we would have visibility into that and be able to.
So Jerry, Jerry.
Inspection?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So the same person who's doing our inspection with SEH, he'll keep an eye on that one as well. He runs herd over those contractors as well. So we're prepared for that. And we also, if we need to pivot, we can work with OMG to try and extend these prices should we need to go that way. And we wouldn't accept a check from them. Hard cash currency or maybe a bond recall or something. So that's.
All right. Any other questions on the street improvement project?
Just being honest.
It's your outside voice, Phil.
All right. If not, we'd entertain a motion on Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-three.
I'll make that a motion. Resolution twenty-five thirty-three, twenty twenty-five Street Improvement Project.
Great.
Second.
We have a motion by Mike and a second by Robin. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, state no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Number nine, Administrator and Staff Reports. We have the encroachment easement for TRH Properties. Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So tonight, I have a request from TRH Properties LLC, who is the owner of Charlie's Bar and Grill. And this is to approve an encroachment easement agreement with the city of Becker. TRH Properties is proposing a small building addition specifically to expand their onsite freezer space, freezer space in support of their business. Due to existing site constraints, there really is no reasonable alternative spot for it. So that's why they're looking to do this easement. To accommodate the expansion, a proposed addition would encroach approximately one foot onto a city-owned sidewalk, specifically Outlet A in T-Town, which is currently used as like a public parking lot. But they're just going to be going into the sidewalk. As part of this proposal, the existing sidewalk in that area would be narrowed from seven feet to six feet wide. City staff did discuss it with Public Works staff, who was in support of that. The encroachment area is shown in image one point one that's in your packet. The highlighted version of the survey shows kind of a reference of where they're going to be working. But since the time the city council packet was made, we did receive an updated survey that shows the correct one-foot encroachment. Bogart had it at a two and a half foot easement, which is not correct. So city staff will make sure to correct that. It is also worth noting that TRH Properties already holds an ingress egress easement across Outlet A specifically for parking. I just wanted to note that. This draft encroachment easement, easement agreement outlines several key conditions. A few of them are, TRH Properties must execute the agreement, which will be recorded against both their parcel and Outlet A. The updated survey will be used in the final recorded documents. Property owner assumes full responsibility and liability for the encroachment, including, including any future maintenance, repairs or impacts. And then if the, if the building is ever voluntarily demolished, the easement would become known void. And then the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute the agreement and related documents, subject to final review by the attorney, city attorney. And then the agreement also provides TRH Properties and future owners the right to access that easement for maintenance, repair or replacement if they need. And then in addition, I just wanted to note a few things. Exhibit A has the legal description of their existing property. Exhibit B is the legal description of the easement area, which is the correct one. And then Exhibit C is the unmarked certificate just showing their full site. So with that, city staff recommends, and is looking for a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-five thirty-two, which authorizes the encroachment agreement between the city of Becker and TRH Properties LLC, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement. So with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions for Austin? If not, we would entertain a motion for Resolution twenty-five thirty-two.
I'll make that a motion. Twenty-five thirty-two encroachment agreement easement for TRH Properties LLC.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mike, a second by Becky. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, state no. Motion carries. Thank you. And we have a request for Sherburne County speed study on Cassau twenty-three. Mr. LaRude.
Eric Obinger and city council members, about a month ago, city staff met with county staff and township representatives to talk about the proposed trail along Cassau twenty-three. And one of the items that was brought up, there was a concern of both the township and the city, was the, the speed through the corridor. And the county staff had said, the, both the city and, and the township could request a joint, have a speed study done in that area as they're planning for next year's improvement project. I did reach out to the township, but I didn't hear anything back. So my thought was we would, I think there was interest on the people who were there from the city that night to have a, have a warrant study done. And there is a risk that if the, the study shows that the, the speed needs to be higher as it comes farther south, that is what would happen. I don't think that that's very likely. Right now, it, it switches to forty-five just north of Edgewood at your southbound into town. And so my plan, if the council adopts this, I would share it with the township and they can submit their own resolution. But we would forward this to the county, particularly as it relates to, from Edgewood up to one hundred and third. That's where our interest lies in seeing what that speed should be. So with that, staff would request that the council adopt Resolution twenty-five twenty-seven, requesting the county conduct a speed study.
So are we looking for the speed to be lowered or what?
Yes. Ideally, at least out to the park.
Is this the, so the timing of this, I mean, they're going to be doing, the county's going to be doing the project, the road project next year.
Next year.
Would you have better luck if you waited till after that or?
I can't answer that question. I'd hate to call on, I'd like to call on Randy, but I'd hate to call on him because it is, it is a state aid project. And so I think they would evaluate the speed at the current condition of the road. If we waited, that condition might allow for, for faster traffic.
I, I don't think it'll.
It may have no change whatsoever.
I don't think it'll increase.
I don't think it will increase either.
But I don't think it'll decrease either.
But now is the time to ask.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's a good faith gesture because we, we've talked a lot about that roadway and the trail and this is, this is a concern. So.
But you know, I, over the years, I've spent a lot of time on the golf course and you see the traffic going by there. And I, I tell you, they go pretty fast.
Especially for me because I hit it out by the road there, so.
I mean, once they get, once they get past Edgewood.
That should slow them down, Rick.
They are really, I mean, some of them really go fast.
Yep.
And I'm talking seventy, eighty, ninety miles an hour. Of course, if there's a thing up there checking the speed, they probably will slow down. I don't have a problem with it.
I think the very minimal risk that it goes up is worth the, worth trying to get it lowered if we can.
Any other questions for Greg? If not, would anybody like to make that motion for Resolution twenty-five twenty-seven?
Make the motion to adopt Resolution twenty-five twenty-seven on the speed study.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Robin, a second by Becky. Is there any further discussion?
Yep. One final question. What's the ETA roughly when they do this, if we adopt this year?
I don't know. I'll have to ask Dave and I'll get back to you at the next meeting.
All right. So, question. Any other questions? Not, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, state no. The motion carries. All right, we're on to the consent agenda. Mr. LaRude again.
Items for approval on tonight's consent agenda include the revised hiring and termination report, declaring property surplus and ordering its disposal, approved change order number seven for the Police Department City Hall project in the amount of twelve thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars and five cents, and approved partial pay request number nine in the amount of five hundred twenty-four thousand, sixty-seven dollars and six cents to Apex Construction Group for the twenty twenty-four Police Department City Hall renovation project. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have questions on the consent agenda? Not, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda as pre. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Rick. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Robin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, state no. Consent agenda passes. Payment of the bills.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Okay, we have a motion by Becky, a second by Rick to pay the bills. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, state no. The bills are paid. Anniversary announcements. We have three part-time employees, all from the golf course. Dewey Sommerdorf, eleven years. Brenda Peterson, eight years, and Spencer Heinrichs, five years. So congratulations and thank you for your continued service to the city. Is there anything else anybody has to bring before council tonight? If not, we'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
Second. Have a motion by Mike, seconded by Rick. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, state no. Meetings adjourned at five fifty-one. We'll have council shut off their microphones, we'll take a brief recess, and then we will call the executive session to order in a couple of minutes.
If I'm ever late. This morning, be there by nine and my car said I'd be there at eight thirty-four. I got there at nine fifty-four.
All right. It's five fifty-four. We will call the city council executive session of April fifteenth to order. First agenda item is the infrastructure grant and discussion, Mr. Sanders.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So Minnesota Housing released a grant for infrastructure for a number, I said housing, so it's for a number of housing developments. It's eight million dollars. Each grant is up to five hundred thousand. You can only have one at a time. And we've been doing a lot of background work on the two twelve. We have a group internally as staff, so city administrator, public works, finance, planning, we all kind of have been talking about development-wise, what can we do? And this grant in particular is an opportunity for us to use some, it's a matching fund, so it's fifty percent that they would front up to five hundred thousand. The city has to front the other portion of it. You have to have it allocated as a hundred percent cost of the project or greater. And we've talked about this engineering, who's here tonight as well, and Bryce, did some rough estimate and cost numbers. And we've identified kind of a preferred project that we think would score higher. One of the reasons that this grant is good for the city is we need housing. We don't have people knocking down the doors to do housing and this would help, you know, recoup some of the costs for that. Scoring wise, you're likely, and with the rubric which they just released recently, you're likely going to score higher for a number of reasons, including probably multifamily housing is going to score probably higher than single family. But we do have a couple of pieces that we've talked about, single family, which are out across on the east side of the river that we'll get to. But really, the preferred project would be Luann Drive. So it would be to finish out Luann all the way to Edgewood and then you would connect that through. Because currently where it ends, and I can zoom in, is right down here in this area. So it's about midway through this property. And this would actually extend storm and sanitary all the way up through and water main. So this would be all the utilities and it would be finishing out curb and road as well. So the grant total based on estimates provided, and again, these are probable costs, so we still have to make sure that these are refined well, but these are, this would be a, and again, this is capital cost, I should say that, so it's fifty percent capital. The finance kind of broke this down. The potential grant application for this would be fifty percent, it'd be four hundred and thirty thousand. So eight hundred and sixty thousand is what could be covered under the grant at capital, fifty percent of that, that's four thirty. The total would be one million nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. So this is the one that we're recommending. One of the things that we did is finance kind of did just an estimated, and these numbers on estimated housing units served are not, just be aware, these are estimates, so I want the public to be aware of that too. But if you stuck an apartment building, some quad homes, some multifamily like patio homes, one hundred and ninety-eight units, this is what your estimated market value, expanded estimate would be at thirty-eight million, which would expand your tax capacity, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, and then your annual tax would be a couple hundred thousand. That's just using some rough numbers. So you'd be spending money, but you're also over time going to recoup that by incentivizing further development on the property. So that's our preferred recommended option. We have some other residential ones that we can chat about tonight. We're going to have to chat about these anyway. It's on the two hundred and twelve property and the property to the south, which is owned by Jethro Carpenter and his partners, including some of the outlots from River Bend a few years ago. A lot of those are related to each other and we do need to have that conversation about where that leads because there's some substantial expense involved to develop those out and to get the city's two hundred and twelve acres developed as well. So I can go through those if you want to see some of what we've done to see the costs. I think if you're interested in that, we can kind of go through that right now. Everybody okay?
Good idea. People good with that?
And finance or anybody else can jump in if I miss anything. This has been a group effort on this, so, and I appreciate finance and everybody else. This is, we've had some good discussion, so. Engineering put this together, so it's color-coded, so there's three breakdowns here. There's a couple more that finance did that we worked on outside of this to understand a little bit of the idea. But the gray, or the blue area would be Thirty-seventh Street and that would result in seventeen lots. It's technically, there's showed twenty-one and I can zoom in on this, so you guys can see it a little more. I figured I was going to have to do this anyway because I couldn't see a lot of it online either, so. So it'd be this blue area, there's, and this is using River Bend's third addition, which was, I don't know if you recall, but a few years back in twenty eighteen, Carl Johnson had explored plating this out. That's what this is based on. You could probably shrink up some of the lots a little bit and maybe get one or two more, but it's, this is a good representation of what we would see. The area in green, Thirty-seventh Avenue, the four lots on the north side, so the four there would not be able to be served if Thirty-seventh is the project. The forest main on One Twelfth and the sanitary sewer would have to go in to serve those four northwest lots. The one in the middle, so the purple, that's Thirty-sixth Avenue, this would go to where One Twelfth would be. And then also including storm sewer down to the retention pond on this side, on the south side. And a couple of these are also including the storm sewer. You'll notice this yellow line. This was the preferred kind of plan for the storm sewer with this full development. That's what Ross Sable and the engineering had come up with at that time to get the storm water down to the pond versus going through the middle. And then the last one would be Jade Street and Thirty-Fifth. So this would, there's already utilities in the ground here, sewer, water, and storm, sanitary, and water. So this would be just finishing out a corner and it would get you probably six, I think we counted six or seven developable lots on this corner. But it also picks up circulation, so now you have a secondary way for people to go should the road be blocked on one side. And you don't have to mess with this fun turnaround anymore at the end, which we've had probably some more six-point turns than I want to admit on that piece, but. So those are the three that were highlighted there and I'll zoom out here.
So this would be in lieu of doing the Luann Drive, you might consider this instead?
So you could consider it, yes. There's a, and I'll show the alternatives. The question is, do you apply for two? Do you apply for one where you're a higher chance of getting that grant? Do you apply two at the same time? So you could do both of these, see which one you get. Again, likely you're going to have a score higher on the Luann one.
Is this something that we can go back and apply again after we complete?
Yep. So it's every, I think you can only hold one at a time and I think it's every two years, if I recall correctly, so. So you hold it if you finish a project and you come back, you can, and they're still doing it.
Makes sense to the most desirable first and then.
Yeah, and the reason we're looking at this area too, we looked at the two twelve, what would it take to get us, and we'll talk about that, but One Hundred and Twelfth Street in to serve the two twelve? The lowest hanging fruit is really the stuff that's already there, outlawed and oriented in a way that you can't really change a whole lot. You're still going to be getting rooftops as a city development on a narrower scale. So it is good putting benefit and some of that stuff has to get in in order for the two twelve to get served. So in this case, Jade Street to Thirty-Fifth, that gray area, it would be two hundred and twenty thousand nine fifty to finish that out because again, you're not putting any storm or any sort of, you know, major storm, any of that. So a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And then Thirty-Sixth, so this is this purple area. That's probably, and one of the things we talked about in our group is working south to north because when you, as you go north, you go uphill. And as you go uphill, the costs get more substantial because you've got more relief you have to get to get the sewer and stuff down and grading and everything. So in the middle, the Thirty-Sixth Avenue extension to One Twelfth Street, and that would include that, this red kind of line down to the stormwater pond, that would be a total cost of one point six eight five million. For capital cost, it'd be one point three around there. And then that would max out your grant at five hundred, so you'd be, you'd still have, you know, roughly eight hundred thousand dollars in what you'd be putting towards it because it'd max out the grant. That one makes, that'd be seventeen lots and you'll notice down here, we did kind of some rough numbers on that as well, so.
How's that only seventeen lots? Is it just the purple?
Just the purple, yeah, yep. So you only really get those ones served with that route. And the other thing is, if you started at the north, and I'll get to Thirty-seventh, if you start north, you have to put all of that sanitary sewer or storm sewer in first. So if you start in the blue area on the very north side, all of this yellow line has to go all in right at the very beginning rather than phasing it over time.
So Jacob, am I reading it right on that one? We're talking a hundred thousand dollar investment per lot? In, in, in infrastructure or close to it?
Mm-hmm. Yep. So this is one of the things we've got to have the discussion about too is we need to see housing, we need to see development, we want to do this. Nobody's banging down the doors. So at what level of the city we're willing to participate in helping further some of these developments? Because there's some substantial costs involved in making these work.
That brings a.
And developers.
Cost of the lot is more than what lots sell for.
Yeah. And that's where a lot of developers have really struggled with this stuff. And that's why in a lot of rural areas, they're just not banging down the doors to do a lot of that stuff. We just read an article that was interesting from Sock Center. They ended up doing similar to what we're doing and developing themselves because nobody was coming to the table. It just, they couldn't make it work with the margins. So yeah, you're, and that's why we put it on here so that you understood that, so that the level of participation in the city, we talk about wanting, you know, further development and growth and where we're at in some of the financial things and I can, I don't want to step on finances' toes. We have some good ability to do some of this infrastructure work and be participants at the table, especially if the comfortability level on TIF or other things, if they don't apply, isn't there. And so now you're not giving up tax, but you're participating by putting infrastructure in the ground, which does add up to dollars that save developers on the backside.
How many lots were on the, was it Luann?
Luann.
So Luann is just a rough, again, this is based on, I think, an apartment building or two apartment buildings and then, do you remember how many quads you did, Mark?
Squads and twelve double lots, so twenty-four, twenty-four, and then the fifty-twos.
And it was kind of a rough arbitrary, what could you see on some of this that's served by the extension of Luann?
Well, I guess just from number-wise, that one makes more sense.
And that's kind of where we landed as staff as well. But the reason we put these other ones in here is because we did, we do need to have that conversation about that area, especially related to, we own two hundred and twelve acres that we spent one point two million dollars on and we want to develop that to get housing, but there's a number of things that we have to kind of come into play first.
Talking about has to occur first.
And some of it, I mean, there's the storm sewer, I mean, you want a lot of that stuff to occur while you're doing the road or in phases at least before the road goes in. But from serving some of these lots, I mean, they're low hanging fruit that are narrow dense lots. If you don't do anything here, could you go up here? Yeah, but it's substantial cost and there's still some grading you would have to do. So I don't know, we talked to staff, these just make a lot of sense to help finish out because you're, you're still furthering what you want in housing. It's not the own city lot, but then you're also just working yourself north with the infrastructure. Go ahead, Rick.
So with, with these, I mean, you look at what's the likelihood that a, a project with, you know, I mean, really what we're doing is setting the table and hoping that, you know, builders pick this up and take it because we don't own either of these, you know, lots. We own the lots to the north, but in this case, we don't own this. We don't own those other lots that run along that would be the extent Luann there. I mean, in both cases, there is the potential, you know, you build a, I don't want to say a road to nowhere, but you know, you build it and it's, you know, three years from now, it's still an empty field. I see that less, less likely with this one. Can you, can you, can you talk, okay, this grant, can you get in a little more? I'm assuming it'd be this, okay, there's criteria, so you said it, we would score better with multifamily housing or can you talk about, what are the details of this?
That's what I anticipate. I mean, there's some that the city's not going to get scoring for. If you're tribal, you get added points. There's things that the state does. I just am saying that purely from a, they tend to favor denser development. It's just kind of how things go. There are some pieces to it, income pieces, but they're not super low income. That is something that they do talk about affordability or a mix or what's affordable for the area, which in the case of Becker is going to be very different than what it is for Clear Lake or what it is for Big Lake or Elk River.
Is affordable a percentage of the county average income or? Is affordable a percentage of the county average income or so?
It is. So they define it that way. You have an eighty percent of the median, which would put us, I kinda, I think I looked at twenty twenty four and it's like sixty five thousand for a one person. At eighty percent of your AMI. So for a two-person family, it bumps even up from there to like eighty something thousand or something like that. So it's still, you, the income limits are not. Super, super low where you're hitting the twenties or thirties or forties.
So this would be a, whether it was one or the other, this is a project for infrastructure.
Yep.
What is, okay, we give a, an estimate that says, okay, if we put this infrastructure in, we're gonna get thirty four houses or we're gonna get. Three apartment, two apartment buildings and a bunch of quad homes or whatever. Is there a, a requirement that says that if we put this in, that those have to be within a certain amount of years? Or we gotta give some of this back or, I mean, what if it?
There are some time, there are some time constraints. So, but it's more, I don't think it's on the housing per se as it is. There is an agreement that's negotiated, but there's nothing that I've read so far in the documents that says that there's any time limit on like. Hey, the houses have to go in a next number of years. I'll double check that and see, but I haven't seen anything so far. The one thing I have seen is that you have to spend it within three years. You can have up to two years of extension on top of that, um, if agreed to by Minnesota Housing, but I don't.
Could put in the street, but it, I mean, at the end of the day, those projects out there, I mean, we, totally separate issue. They have forty six thousand dollars worth of, uh. Um, uh, what do you call it? Um, assessments on them currently on the ones that are on the way. So, I mean, something's gonna have to be done there or otherwise, you know, so those are completely separate discussions that we have, but let's say those are not fruitful. Those products probably aren't gonna go anywhere. What are they gonna do to us if we go to them and say, hey, we got the, you know, a hundred and whatever homes, blah, blah, blah. We don't control that and they don't go anywhere. What, what happens?
That's a good question. I think with any sort of grant, they're gonna have some strings attached. I, and I can pull it up to see if there's any time limits on when the housing has to go in. I just didn't think there was, but we'll, we can check that. This is. One thing too, just so you know, this has to come back to you for final approval and resolution before it would go to the state anyway. But that is something I have to check on. It's a good question.
Concerned, cause, um, we're not in the driver's seat out there. I mean, we could very easily put this in and this is the state grant, right?
Yep. No, Minnesota Housing, yeah, it's a state.
So it's not like a Rockefeller or anything like that?
Nope, it's a state grant.
Okay.
So MMB would be the one that we have some in the past, but Minnesota Management and MMB grant, yeah.
So Jacob, when I read it, what I took away was that. As the recipient of the grant, we would be required to spend the grant on the approved project in the time period in which we have agreed. It doesn't stipulate that the housing has to be in. It just, if your grant is approved for the infrastructure that supports that housing. Your stipulation is that you have to complete the project and all the grant.
The street project?
Yes, the infrastructure.
Yep.
It is an infrastructure.
Yeah, infrastructure.
For housing. So it's not like they're giving the grant to someone who's building housing. They're trying to stimulate the infrastructure so that that.
And that's why I said I don't, I haven't seen anything in there that does that. There's a number of documents they just released that we're combing through on the rubric and the criteria. Um, but yeah, that's.
There, like out on Luann, there's one mainland owner and then a one. But other than that, I mean, if they decide, you know what, even though we've talked about this as apartments, they decide, nope, we're going single family or whatever, something other than we. Put it in the bid for. We're not on the hook for any.
You still would have to follow the zoning in there.
Correct.
Well zoning, yeah, but I mean, I'm saying that's, this, they're, the grant's not gonna come back and say, okay, well you used a different criteria to get the grant. Now that, what actually played out was different than you, you don't, you don't owe us any money. After that, right?
Not that I've, not that we've seen to this point. Again, I, I think what might be helpful based on this, Rick, is we, we didn't bring a lot of like. We had a, started a breakdown of those, but if you wanna see more details, I think on this, we can bring that back on. Here's X criteria of what we're seeing. Based on this criteria, this is what you have to do, but I, I, from what I've read so far, it doesn't seem like there's any of that that's tying you. To some proposal. Now, they're gonna negotiate an agreement and whether that ends up in the agreement or not, I'm not sure. But they're gonna wanna see something for what they're giving. That's typically the case.
Yeah, I can add, um, I think it's Ju- June twelfth is the deadline, so we have all of May to, to review this. There are a couple of. Webinars coming up, um, in April and then they're gonna do a frequently asked questions by the end of May. So I think we'll participate in those and we can get answers to that. We can come back sometime, I think in May. With the plan of having it the first meeting in June, if council wants to proceed with the resolution supporting the grant application. So we have a month to get your questions answered.
How does the? The, the, um, the income piece though, I mean, how does that tie, if this is strictly an infrastructure project, how does that tie in?
Well, that is one piece that if, if you're coming in, that there is. And again, I think to Greg's point, we can bring exact language to you so you can see it, but the thing is here, there is some tie to what you're putting in the ground. So they. They will say, if you're getting this grant. If you're a developer, you are tied to some of that. So. Let's say Marty Harstad's property and he's the one that does it. With that infrastructure, if he develops, right? Let's say he comes in and builds. They are tied with the infrastructure to some of what is being on an income level or. Things like that, right? There's some affordability components to this, but I. I, this is why I say, we didn't bring it tonight, line by line. I think we need to bring it back at a different meeting.
That's where, that's where I'm missing this is how, how Marty, I mean, this is a city, the city's putting it for a grant, how does Marty? Get hamster, how does he get tied to a specific project or?
Let, let me pull this up, hold on. I'm gonna pull up the rubric, Greg. So here's the, this is what I was looking for.
So are we the grantee or is Marty Harstad the grantee?
We are.
Oh, hi.
Hey, Mark.
No, I was gonna pull that up, did you? Sorry, there's, with any of these, as you guys know, there's a lot of documentation with this. And this was released pretty recently.
So I'm looking at this too. It, it does not define within this. It, it's obviously somewhere else. It must contain affordable and workforce housing. There's no definition of that here. It must be elsewhere, but it says may also contain market rate. So we would have to, we'll have to define that. So you have that information.
So did we just basically define for Marty Harstad and for McChesney, the two property owners out there, then we would define what basically could go on those property? I mean, more than zoning, this would be very specific. That has to be that.
Potentially.
How do we, how does that get defined if they, they, if they're not a participant in this? You know, beyond zoning, I mean, we have normal zoning and that's how we would do that, but how do, how do we confine their use to that land without? Zoning and without them being a participant in this agreement here, how does that work?
Well, I don't know, that's, I, I think that's one of those things and, and maybe they'll, we should ask that when they have their meeting. Um, that's coming up, but I, that is, that is a good point. It, it's something high. Cause they're gonna tie the city to something, how do you tie a separate developer is your question?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm not understanding how we can dictate that to a.
So I think what we'll do is ask the question, um, I don't know if they'll have a Q and A, but I think regardless, we need to answer that question. Cause my guess is we're not the only ones that are gonna have that question.
And if we don't. You're, you're thinking we, okay, did the grant say we had to have a component of that?
Of, of affordable?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so.
It says you must either affordable housing, workforce housing or full.
Correct.
So have to have some aspect of more of those two components, but it may also contain a mix of. Of, um, market rate housing.
Okay, and can we get, um, and not necessarily that we have to do random spot here, but maybe for the next time we discuss this, can we get definitions of what? What is affordable housing? What is?
There, there is a definition here, but we need to attach dollar amounts.
Okay, so.
Well, there is a definition and that's why I said we can attach the sheet that the state uses for each area, which is Sherburne County in general.
Restricted, housing restricted.
Correct.
Right.
Who restricts it?
That's, it's based on the number, so it's. I, I see what you're saying, but that's, I think that's the point. We don't know how you tie somebody else. So if it's a publicly owned city lot, you could tie it into the developer's agreement. Or something like that. I think in this case, and I think we discussed this actually now that I'm recalling this about how you tie. A developer to this.
Does HUD gotta come in here and do this then?
Well, I think that's, we gotta have that question answered, cause that is a good point. How do you tie somebody to it? But the HUD, when you're talking about what they're calculating based on, it's the state, the state has a chart that they base all of the AMIs on.
Is this geared toward city-owned property?
It's geared towards.
Not necessarily.
Public infrastructure, really. It doesn't say it's public owned.
And a developer? Apply for this grant?
Nope. Has to be a government agency.
Okay, so eighty percent of the area median income and I think. What, ninety six thousand, I think is our current.
Someone, it's eighty something thousand, I think. We'd have to.
Eighty eight was the two and twenty number and then I think they've estimated it now in ninety six is that? A number everybody.
And it's based, it, it's, it's house, number of people in your household. There's a chart that works it up.
So if we say eighty percent.
It says whichever is greater as well.
Yeah, we'd be bigger than the state. I, we know that. Um, so let's, let's just say a hundred thousand, just for the sake of round, round numbers. So housing restricted, we don't know who's restricting it. Somebody's restricting it to eighty percent. We'll just call it eighty thousand or a hundred fifteen percent of these. For ownership housing.
Yeah, and I see, Rick, I think this is the thing, I see what you're saying about the tying somebody. If we don't own the property to something, how does that, that mechanics work?
He sees this project over here, he goes, I'd rather do that.
Yep.
He now he can do it.
Right.
Is this something you have to have a, an agreement, a development agreement with somebody before you do this?
You'd have to have an agreement with Minnesota Housing. With any of their grants, they always.
Develop, whoever's gonna do the developing, do you have to have an agreement with them? It would make sense to.
Well, I think that's part of the question though. It does, it's not necessarily a hundred percent clear how that works with somebody else that's not the city.
I look at it, if we did this, if I was a different landowner, I think I would be scared. That, hey, this just happened and I'm just wondering where the landowner becomes part of the conversation because. A lot of other people, I mean, a landowner can go, hey, look what just happened to me. The city did this and now it limits this.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I, I think we need them, landowners involved in this. At least a discussion, so I, I think we would have to have some kind of agreement with them before we even proceed.
Even if you have the landowners at the table, I don't. I mean, when you get in this, it's, when you're saying a cap at eighty percent.
True.
Who's, I mean, that, it's not gonna be us. We're not gonna be the ones capping it. It's probably gonna be. You know, MDH or somebody. If somebody's gonna have to do this, it's gonna be some type of a program and I just, I don't.
The other thing, the other thing to remember, it's not all of the units.
No, but it is some of.
It's gonna be some, right. And a typical, if you did a, a housing, a TIF district is twenty percent of the union, units. Are, are income restricted. They're not, uh, they're not, um, wealth constricted. So a lot of people have a lot of money in the bank, but all they have is social security. They qualify.
Yeah.
So there is, I, I, I think we have to find out, and I, I suspect that the point to how you would point out, the more you have available in your development. Um, geared toward workforce or affordable housing, the higher you're gonna point out, but if we can reach a, a comfort level of us and the property owner says. Well, let's take our shot at a relatively low number and see what, uh, see what it looks like.
And we can approach Marty about that. I mean, he's.
That property is for sale.
Yeah, it's for sale.
Yeah.
And he's offered, and I mean. The city a pretty good price on it, but it's been for sale for quite some time.
Well, this is one reason why, because it's caused a.
Well, I think with Marty.
Dollars a lot for.
Yeah, I think it's also though with Marty, then the talks with him, it's, he's out of the game anymore. He's not really in the development game. He doesn't wanna hold him anymore.
And that's gets us into that, you know, kinda with the two twelve, I mean, we weren't, we, you know. Holding land is not our game. We're a service provider. I mean, but, you know, the two twelve was a, an excellent thing because it was either that or we're gonna be a solar host. You know, I mean, that, or a neighbor to a solar and a farm in our growth area. So I mean, that, it made sense there and maybe it makes sense here too to buy it from Marty. I don't know, but. I just, I don't, I'm just, I'm always, I know TIF for instance has the minimum twenty, but every TIF project we've seen. And everyone I've looked at is way more than twenty because it's a guaranteed paycheck. I mean, it's, it's, the, it's a minimum of twenty, but they, they're always a lot more on, on the affordable housing part of it. So. I just don't wanna do something we're gonna regret later.
Oh, no, no, that's fair and we, we agree. Uh, this is why we wanted to have this in the exact session is make sure we're on the same page. I think from the standpoint of how do you tie it to somebody else is the big question, to be honest. That's, that's where the rubber meets the road in this. Um, and if you are, how does that work out over time? Part of the reason that we looked at this grant as an opportunity wasn't to say, hey, it's free money. It's more. As the city, we're gonna have to be involved somehow in helping these developments move. That, that's, that's kind of the thing that council's gonna have to say. At what level are you willing to participate in moving housing along?
Not at a hundred thousand a lot.
It's a lot of money. So I think that's, and that's why we wanted to bring the numbers is cause it gives you some gauge of, you know, the two. And I could touch on all of the other numbers that we have. As you work out to one twelfth, a lift station's needed to put in one twelfth. You have to get a force main from that lift station back to sixty seven. You also then have to get up on thirty fifth to serve lots that are up in there. It's a lot of money that you're starting to outlay, but. If we want housing, we're gonna have to at least do something. Now, whether it's through a grant or whether it's through the city's own. Piece, it, it, something's gonna have to be done. Cause I, I just, based on the conversations, we're just not seeing, we're seeing developers ask, but they're always gonna want TIF. I mean, that's, that's just the, and you're competing against. This is, you're competing against many other cities at this point too, because a lot of them are offering that kinda stuff. Or they have other amenities. And that's, that's kinda the struggle I think is at what level.
Yeah, I would, I don't, I, I would be, I would be okay, um. So we have all the facts, if you wanna gather, you know, so we're not speculating anything. We have the facts in front of us. Um, I'm, I'm just gonna. Say right now, even if, if, if these facts come back and they're anywhere close to what we've talked about here, I would not. Be in favor of putting it in, but yes, let's, let's have all the facts in front of us and have a discussion.
Well, and I think if, I, I mean, if that's the answer, we'd rather know now than later. We don't wanna get down the road on something to your point that we're gonna regret. It was just opportunity, if you're gonna participate at something like that, it does serve some public benefit.
Yeah, my main concern is that we'd be on the hook down the road for something.
Sure.
And I look, if we're gonna, I, I think it could stymie future development if we're. Tying the hands of people with, with their land that, that just.
Well, that's why I said we need to have an agreement with them beforehand before we. To just go in and arbitrarily say this is what it's gonna be. They might, they might not wanna do that.
Or you own the land that it's going on, which.
That's different, but I'm not too excited about buying more land either.
It sounds like to me, I don't. It sounds like to me, I don't, it's the start of a good conversation, we need to bring some things back, we'll talk about it. I, I think there's gonna be more conversations, we put, we didn't get through all the numbers that we have here, um, there's a number of them as you go down. This is just for your info, this looks at the whole two twelve and what it would take to serve it, um, there's a number of. And this is really for all of these infrastructure costs, you're looking at a huge amount of dollars to get that two twelve developed. So the question is, how long do you wanna sit on it versus? So, it sounds like we need to bring some more stuff back, which we'll do, um, we'll attend, I think the twenty-third and thirtieth are the two dates that we'll attend, so.
That was of May or April?
Uh, April, yeah, it's April, so then we can bring back more at May third meeting. If that's fair, and then we can let you know and have you make a further decision from that point. Yeah, it's not, it's not gotten cheaper to develop, it's just gotten more expensive.
Chris, how much leech it can you take? Ten thousand trucks a day.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate it, this is what we wanted to have, so thank you very much, we'll bring back stuff, you want me to pull that up? Oh, we got another item?
We have another item, it's a Colbert item.
Call this one point five.
Just trying to get this, when I reference Sherburne Avenue, Second Street, Shell Station.
Oh, there we go, thank you.
So with what Grant is, is doing, um, or proposing to do, uh, we had a conversation, so we, we met with, with Grant, um. Engineering and, and the county as well, so the county's going to repave, even though it's not a project, I'm trying to figure out their terminology. They have no intention to do anything with Sherburne, but, but we're gonna repave it, so, so their plan to repave that is in twenty twenty-eight, we don't know if that's. Real, sometimes they move those around a little bit, I don't think it moved closer or moved away, but the question is, is, is Grant's trying to remodel this thing? He's trying to get very aggressive with this and this fall, is, is what his timeline was, okay? So the question is, right now you've got about, if you look at that whole property in its totality, you've got about three hundred degrees of access to that whole block. Which we're trying to eliminate that, right, and as we're meeting with Grant, one of the things that we're looking at, if you look at Second Street. I can point it out here, we have crosswalk that comes across Second Street right now, and it fills people into a parking lot. So there's nothing there, so at a minimum, from a city perspective, what we, we would propose, and we're trying to get your, your judgment on this. Um, to participate in putting a sidewalk down here to the north side of, of Bank Street, the county would allow us to put a crosswalk here. Because if you see Bank Street, it's one of the most heavily traveled, both pedestrian and cars in our community.
People cross there a lot.
Mm-hmm. Yes, and so what we're trying to do is like, this is public safety, can we get a six foot sidewalk on this portion, so it's no longer the parking lot? And then we can get it across here, but we're trying to make it palatable for Grant to do this thing without burdening him with more additional cost. The other thing that came up is the backside curb, right now, there's two open curbs, cuts about here. Otherwise, there is a little bit of curb in here, otherwise it's just rollover curb or trough curb the whole way. So he's looking to say, and the ask was, would the city be willing to participate in the curb cost on the outside? He knows all the internal stuff is his for sure, the county says, well, it's yours, you're the developer, you should pay for this. And I'm looking at it from a city perspective to say, this has been an eyesore for thirty years. And we've got somebody that's willing to try and do this thing, is the city and can the city participate in this in any way? And wanted to get your take on it before we brought anything to legal or had further discussions on it or put deeper costs into this, what's your take on that?
Well, if we're, if, if you wanna put a sidewalk and a crosswalk in there, that's a safety issue, that the reason we're talking about that. And I guess to me, that justifies participation in that, uh, uh, cause it is a safety issue.
Yep, and, and again, we, we don't have a safe connection point there right now, so.
Wh- which side of Bank Street would it connect to?
The north side, right now, it, it's, we've argued that because we're lining up, if you see his entrance, it lines up with Bank Street. So to cross it there, parking lot and cross there, we're also trying to push that crosswalk further north, we could put a crosswalk on Bank Street then, so you could have two. If you go down a rolling ridge, it's a four-way cross, right? So if you cross on, on Sherburne, we're, we're trying to give enough stacking, so if somebody's using the crosswalk and I'm flying off Highway ten. I still have a stacking distance there, so we're trying to be respectful of that, and then if we cross them on Bank if we needed to, to get them to the south side of Bank Street. Where a lot of those businesses are at, and you could have choices to, to go, um, we didn't wanna get carried away, this was just kind of, you know, starting to put the thought process together. And what it could look like, but we could also, Grant would stop short of the, the, the north side of his entrance.
That's where the sidewalk would end, right there, I think is when we talked about it.
He would propose to stop at a little short of that, so he wouldn't bring people to that intersection, he would actually put them out here someplace where he would put a pet ramp. Here to bring him closer to his store, and then we would, we'd go here, so we would just have green space right on the edge there. Whether people would use that or not, we, again, these are just rude and crude, uh, Rice tried to just blow up some stuff based on somebody else's drawings. So we've not put a whole lot of time into that, we just wanted to kinda get a flavor of where that's at, and we're just doing our, our responsibility for Grant to say. We'll take the ask, it's not our decision to make, but we'll get a gauge of what, what's going on, um, you, I think have all had experience with Grant. He, he's, he's a very responsible business owner and wants to do whatever he can, the fact of the matter is, and the county agrees with this, if we don't put a street side curb on there. That grass is never gonna grow and people are gonna cut those corners and, and keep rounding it, so if we don't do a high-rise curb back on that side of it. I think it kinda defeats the purpose, you see what we, we see at the grocery store down on First Street, Furniture World, all of those, those places. So if we could do something now, I think now is the time to do it, unfortunately, when we did that section of First Street, the Gilliards told us, you know. Nope, we have no intention to sell this, this is the, the only place that we own that makes money for us, we plan to keep this thing. Two years later, it's not theirs anymore, and, you know, again, nobody can predict the future, but it's unfortunate that we, we didn't have the timing better for our project. We, we could have done some things differently here, but.
Yeah, the only thing they wanted is they wanted to make sure they had access from Sherburne was the big, their big uh, sticking point, which we obliged, but.
Yep.
So the ask from the city then is that we financially participate in some of the high-rise curb south of his entrance there.
He, he would look, I, I, I think to, to Mike's point too, there's justification for that sidewalk and looking at that curb, it makes a lot of sense because. That there's a safety component there and we can try and control pedestrian movement in conjunction with Bank Street, I, you know, I, I would. Take it to any citizen to, to argue what we're trying to do there, um, basically from the south side of his entrance, as it relates to Bank Street. And all the way around to First Street to his entrance off of First Street, he's looking to say, what's that participation? Total, we could be talking upwards, you know, forty or fifty thousand dollars for the total of, of the project ask. So I don't know, again, from a legal standpoint, we, we've not even brought it to them to see legally what we could or could not do. Should we participate in this, is, is it a, you know, I'm, I usually look for other funding sources, not willing to spend our, our CIP money on, on other projects, but. This makes a lot of sense.
Well, anytime you're doing something for safety reasons, it's, opens up a lot more doors than.
Well, and it's aesthetic reasons too, and it's traffic movement, I mean, I, I, there, there's a lot of things, you're gonna add some green space on the south corner there. Um, this, I think it, it could really um, be a gateway into your community, there's a lot of people that come off ten on, onto Sherburne.
And that's such a messy.
And, and you start seeing this stuff, I mean, it's, it, it could really help the, the whole perception of what Becker looks like coming in too.
I, I like the crosswalk over to Bank, I came into town yesterday as kids were.
Oh, yeah.
Walking from school to go get something to eat and go to driver's training, and I saw kids crossing there everywhere. So, so dangerous.
Like real life Frogger.
Yeah.
So, let's, let's put uh, maybe look at it from a little bit of a different angle, um. Your QuickTrip or your, whatever, what's essay called now, whatever, Speedway, um, you're, you're a city taxpayer. You're paying taxes in and, um, your tax dollars would be going to put this in front of another project, I guess, do we consider this a enhancement for? This property, or would we consider this something more citywide, where you could justify that? Your tax dollars would be going for something more citywide as opposed to building up your competition's property.
I don't know if that's doing anything special for, for them.
Per, per, personally, I would say, uh, safety on the sidewalk, the, the boundary curb is really about your traffic and, and controlling your traffic. And keeping that intersection and, and, and traffic flowing around there, would, would be my take on it, we're not doing anything on the inside of his property.
I, I'm more asking the question, I'm not.
Yeah, no, no, and I'm just trying to give you what, you know, how I would, how I would speak to that question.
Look at it from the point of view, the crosswalk allows a safe way for people to get across the road to get to QuickTrip and Speedway.
And it, and it cleans up our maintenance side of it, it gives us boundaries on our maintenance.
What defines a roadway?
E- exactly.
Yeah, I hate it. Because there is no roadway right now.
No, I mean, it's marked, but people don't use the markings.
I'm not even always good at that, not gonna lie, but.
I do the parking lot.
Yeah.
So I have a question, how does this tie in the, and I know it expands it, but how does it tie in the First Street, like Becky in front of your business, who owns the sidewalks there?
They do, but they try to tell me I have to fly.
Let me grab this for you. City owns, pick this up next time.
Well, the city owns some of them, but I think the city doesn't own other ones. Is it like fair or foul, city, not city, city, not city?
If, if you look down uh, across the, the way for the subway, and, and some of that is, the city owns the parking lot.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, that's right, because uh, they tried to, they tried to sell it, we own like, yeah, there's like a big uh, line of sight.
Right.
And so then Rebecca Hernandez drew the line, if you.
Rebecca's has on-street parking, that's, that's ours, their sidewalk is theirs, then it bumps back out and sidewalks are, I mean, it's.
It's a mess.
You're a baseball fan, you got that reference, don't you?
I got you.
All right. I suppose that makes it very complicated for snore removal too.
Oh, yes.
Yes, it does.
That all goes back to.
And that's why we're trying to work with them and Beck's Pub as far as how that's gonna go and where the sidewalk ends, you know, and how do we get people from there to, you know, Old Pine Street. You know, to get them back to Second Street, you know, and, and Grant, obviously you want foot traffic here.
Right.
You know, so you, you want people using that, that establishment, so we're, we're just trying to look at this to say, can, can we partner with a business that, that helps? Keep movement in its lanes, both vehicles and pedestrians, and, and I, I, I think there's a, a component that you could look at this and say. You know, this makes sense for us to keep people where we want people, which is our public roadways.
Right.
Well, no, and I agree in that, the only reason I brought that other piece up is because if it, if it's geared at safety and walkability, can we look at that as an? Entire plan to know how that works, you know what I mean?
Yes. He comes up with the fancy plans, we just execute them.
So this goes back to the First Street corridor plan, it was done in twenty twenty twelve, twenty twenty twenty, dude, you didn't know it was fifty thousand years or whatever in the future, did you? Twenty twelve. Do not put that on record, I know it is, but, so, we've talked about that, it's one of the things that we're. We wanna work on more, it's a long legal thing to work up front, but this does set the tone for at least this portion, and then working upwards northwest as you. Kind of go up the corridor, because the plan in the past, in the Highway ten plan, it's, it calls for a pretty arduous amount of right-of-way. To accomplish a number of things, so we're looking at how do we shrink maybe that plan down, but still accomplish some beautification things, things like that, working with public work, cause. There are some places, I think it was, I wanna say it was probably eighty to a hundred feet, does that sound right? Yeah, which is, goes into some people's buildings, like, it's just substantial, now, years ago, that was one of the reasons that. At the time, that corner lot on Hancock and First Street was torn down.
Mm-hmm, we bought it.
Yeah, city bought it, tore it down as part of that plan, but again, are you gonna do that all the way, way down the corridor? Especially where some of the buildings like Rebecca's, for example, goes right up to the sidewalk, so the sidewalk edge really can't move a whole lot. And that building now in the future, could somebody do something, sure, but is there something you can do that's a, maintain some semblance of the right-of-way? You can still do beautification without having to widen that entire thing, cause while there's some good goals in that First Street corridor plan. The, the issue again was there was a lot of things that were just kinda shoved in, is, yeah, this would be awesome and it'd look great, but to do it would take just astronomical amount of times.
Something, it's like.
It's just a long drawn-out thing, so, working with Phil, it's been something we talked about a while ago, but with, this is something that's on our list to work through as we work up the corridor, so.
So, yeah, what I'm hearing is this could be the first step in a comprehensive look at pedestrian safety.
Correct.
Which, to me, makes perfect sense.
Yeah, and then the trigger would be when that business chooses to change hands or redevelop or something, that's when you pull the trigger back to that plan. So that plan could sit there dormant for a while, but you do have a master plan that, um, Corrigan sold this building, you know, if, if Elam's bought. The, the other side of it said, we don't want this anymore, we wanna build a two-story, ba-da-da, then the city can come in and say, hey, perfect, let's clean up this lot, let's clean up the entrance or whatever. But you execute based on that, that corridor plan at that time.
Well, we kinda did it with Beck's Pub when we found out, yes, the ownership issue there.
Yep, so now you're working with two willing participants that can come in there and say, hey, wait a second, we can take two things and, and, and make it better. Let's, let's strike while the iron's hot right now, but if we have that longer corridor plan, then we take any opportunity as it presents itself to us, we're not gonna come in there, to your point, and say, okay. Let's invest, you know, a hundred thousand dollars in Lake's gas, nope, but if they sell and somebody's interested, now we have an opportunity, what does that look like? Less grass, but here's what our concept plans look like and how can we partner with you on it?
So we're gonna redo that?
Yeah, and I, not that I wanna dive in to do another plan, but I think that's one that.
Be on a strong scale, not like.
That's. Yep. I think that makes sense, it's comprehensive, so I, I don't have an issue participating with, you gotta start somewhere.
So if, if you guys are comfortable with that, we'll internalize it a little bit more, see what the next directions are, and, and probably work with, with our folks. To take some of those plans and truly get a, a concept drawing on there that, that works for everybody and for that movement, and then try and put some construction numbers to it. And just, you know, see what we're looking at.
So if this, we, we, I mean, just earlier tonight, we had our, we talked about having our street crews in town here, I mean, is this something we try and? Get them to do a little alternative bid on, or?
I'm, I'm not sure the timing of that, we wouldn't wanna, you know, put our outside curb in long before they're ready to roll. If he's saying he's coming in in August to start tearing stuff down and our guys could be gone, I don't know what the timing is, we wouldn't say no or yes to it, but just to see what that timing would look like.
Or do you do it next year?
You can always rub it with another project.
Yeah, I'd say more than likely next year.
Okay.
And if you could just go down First Street a little bit, and take some curvature out, that'd be great.
Gee, do you have a building in mind?
You know, we, we could do that, uh, but first, I'd like to talk about selling a parking lot.
At least the snow removal rights on it.
Right, you can keep the snow removal rights, but yeah, sure.
So we're, we'll take that and start, you know, noodling on that to see what it would look like, and obviously nothing, no decisions are gonna be made, just make sure the legalities of it, what we could do. And then give you a better concept of what it would look like and some rough dollars to it, so.
Would, they would restore, we wouldn't be doing anything to their, we're not proposing to do anything with the size of their lot, or they, it would just be the city participating in.
All, all of their inner boundaries, they've already had set, we wouldn't touch any of those inner boundaries, we would just make the outer curb line work with what the traffic movement would look like. And to clean up our streets, so to speak, and we're treating, in this case, we're treating Sherburne Avenue as our street, because the county really isn't going to participate, they don't do a lot. With, with the, the curb and gutter when they look at it with us, but they would be fully supportive of us, what we would look to do is to say, can we do, if, if we come in there with a new curb line? Can we get a break on the, the, um, the pavement re-establishment? If you're going to do this over in two years, do we really have to tear this thing out, patch it this way, then mill it out and, you know, do their, their normal patch, if you're gonna replace this in two years? Can we get by with something that's adequate and safe right now, but more cost-effective and, and knowing it's gonna be redone, so.
So we're gonna make Sherburne gravel for two years.
Oh, God.
Just kidding, come on.
Now you're getting emails, have fun.
That was slow traffic, Don.
That was M, M, M Kolbinger. At CI dot Becker dot MN dot US.
Yeah, I'm just gonna forward mine over to you. All right, round table.
Nothing for me.
Becky, nothing?
Nope.
Ron?
I don't think so.
Great.
I'll just, I'll be gone at the next meeting.
Well, the post office has gone dark, they're not emailing me back now.
Sorry, it's not funny.
Getting ignored. Um, you're just like everybody else.
Just like everybody else. You played nice for a month or two, but, so I have no update on that. Anything else from anybody?
I won't be here on the May twentieth meeting. Have a conference at Ripley. Which means I won't be back for budget and finance on the twenty second either, so we can talk about that this month.
You're gonna be six, Rick, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I won't be able to fill in for her in case you're on her.
You got the most experience, I mean. All right, well, is there anything else? Not entertain a motion to adjourn. Adjourn, that's Rick with a non-verbal motion. Mike with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Right, executive session adjourned at six fifty one. Have a great night.